Just waiting for it to turn its side. You all set?
Yep, you're good to go.
I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business, I would like to stand if you're ready. Good evening, everybody, and welcome back to the Nichols. This is where I started as a school committee member, so always good to be back here. First item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Reports from school community members. Does anyone have anything they should say? Jess?
I just want to express my gratitude for being able to attend, having the opportunity to attend the Massachusetts School Committee Conference last week. I learned a lot. It was a really wonderful event. There were a lot of really informative sessions and I had encouraged anyone who has an option, or I know they just, they said, talked about how they do other like online sessions and lunch and learns and things that maybe make it a little easier to fit into schedule. So I just want to note that I did think it was very beneficial and hopefully kind of a little more idea some of the trends and responsibilities and things that are coming up and changing in school districts or state, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Jessica just said. It was great three days down there. Learned quite a bit. It's always nice to to rub elbows with people in the same position but at different times, to get different perspectives and things like that. It was quite informative, I think. Zeke and I took a couple of the same classes, so we seem to be well versed in those areas. But yeah, really enjoyed the opportunity and looking forward to attending again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, two things. I got a lot of feedback talking to people on this week's parent-teacher conferences. And first, thank you to all the staff and faculty for putting in the work over time. Most of the feedback is good. For example, a lot of families really liked the Nichols model during the you can do online conference or in person. One of the things, just going forward, a lot of families thought maybe we could split up over weeks. If the families, for example, had elementary, a middle, and then high school, like last night was also the winter sports meeting. So some, some families felt a little crunched, but overall it was mostly good. The second thing, a little while back, I spoke with Director Hutchinson and Superintendent about collaborating with Middleborough Little League to fix up and prepare fields over on Mayflower, which is behind HBV. It's the Michael's Field, Stewart Field, and Peters Field. Be no cost to the system. So we talked about it after their fall ball season wraps up. They'll probably start taking a look and figuring out exactly what they're gonna do with that. So I'll have my report once they get on the way.
I just wanted to mention that Mr. Perry messaged me when he was notified that tonight's meeting would be moved back to the middle school and he wanted to express that this was a great opportunity for us to all get to see this building. Because some of us don't have reasons to be here all that often and to just kind of marvel at how well it's been maintained over, you know, 24, almost 25 years now. He just wanted to make note that we're here, take the opportunity to take a look a little bit and see how well the little is standing up. Thanks a lot, probably to him and his staff, so.
And Garrett just moved back here as the head of the facilities. He wasn't in high school for a while. Started at high school, he was here for a while, so he doesn't practice. Any other comments? With that, I'll move on. I noticed the student reps not here today. And so I'll move on to the superintendent's one.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Young, members of the school committee. We get to start my report this evening with my favorite thing to do, which is to recognize the efforts of members of our community. And tonight marks the passing of a very important torch. School safety is a topic that we discuss here at school committee meetings and as a district on a regular basis. What we don't often talk about are the people and the individuals who pour their heart and soul into that work every day. So tonight, I want to recognize Officer Scott Phillips, who's been a school resource officer here in Middleborough since 2018. I've had the distinct pleasure of working with them many, all of those years, actually. And he is happily accepting a promotion within the Middleborough Police Department to sergeant. Very well earned, and I'd be very remiss if I didn't remark that we will miss him greatly and that we truly valued his work and his commitment to the students here in Middleborough. One of the things that always strikes me about all of our SRAs, but Officer Phillips works, you know, with all of our H groups. He's here in the middle school quite a bit, and he's so kind to our students. And one of my favorite things is to see the relationship that grows between our young people and our police officers when they have that opportunity to see them as people and see them as a valuable resource. So with that, I'd like to welcome Officer Phillips to come on up. I think we could take a photo, shake his hand, and congratulate him and tell him how much we love him. I probably should have done that in my school, but I really did. I just wanted Scott to really, you know, have a minute. With that, I will be welcoming, with the help of Officer, I mean Chief Perkins, who is so skilled, you know. What people don't fully understand is that school resource officer work is a very particular area in law enforcement. And he's been so wonderful to really hand-select who works with our kids, and he's so good at it, which is and if you've met any of our school resource officers, you know exactly what I'm talking about. They all have this special quality, that perfect mix of firm and supportive and kind. And so with that, we are welcoming back Officer Zachary Porter, who had a brief stint with us a couple of years ago, if memory serves, but certainly local to Middleborough as AG himself. And we're very excited to welcome him to the Middleborough family. And I am convinced that he's going to be every bit as successful as every other SRO we've ever had. We've only had tremendous officers here in our schools, and it's, it's really that that keeps them safe. It's really the work of these people every day that our school administration and our students put really all of our faith into the department. So with that, I'll welcome Officer Zachary Porter and shake his hand and take a photo. And before I move on to the next item, I do have another special guest here this evening. Oh, I'm sorry.
Which I think is important. There has been a lot of talk across the state about school resource officers in schools. And there has been at times a push to not allow resource officers in school. I think it's important to know that in a lot of those cases, it's about being in the city and things that happen in the city. But I can't recommend, over the course of the 10 years that I've been with the school committee, just the relationships that all the resource officers have had with students and really worked hard to create those relationships. And it goes to the chief more than anybody else about how he set those up. But I also would like to say that one of the things for me, I grew up in a small town, not too far from here. And it was a type of place that, as a kid, you knew every officer in the force because you saw them every day, and whether they were work nights, work mid shift, or day. At some point, they stopped by the school. Officers finish up their shift or started their shift in the school, so kids obviously saw them. And I view school resource officers as just that. It's an opportunity for kids to meet police officers. In addition to that, we have a program in which our high school students can learn about police work and get credit for it. And I think more importantly than that, as we do a fire program for the same thing, it has been amazing to me to see the number of current police officers who took those courses and current firemen who took those courses. And it's a great testament to the work that you all do for the community, and I can't say enough. So thank you both for the entire department, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So before I move on to the next item, what I was going to say is, I've spoken here before about Oak Point, our community not too far down the road, to be honest with you, who not only is a tremendous fundraiser, but a very important community partner. And John Burbage, who is here this evening and the chair of this scholarship committee, is someone that I met with actually just a few weeks ago. I actually met with the whole board. And as I said, well, in December, the next meeting, I'm going to have the board come so we can formally thank them for their fundraising efforts. But what was so inspiring in that conversation was the fact that this is a community partner that wants to deepen that commitment to this community and see how we can reach out to elementary PTO leaders, middle school music programs. We used to run a battle of the bands, our organizations together, and, you know, the meeting with the high school principal and talking further with Mr. Burbage about how we can work together and bring community together, our school community, our citizens, for the betterment of our youngest learners. So with that, I didn't know if Mr. Burbage wanted to come up and say anything or if you want to just give away.
How about I hold my powder until I get the other officers here in the center? We did give $61,000 to the class. I want us to do better than that. It's kind of weird. So we'll see. The yard sale's October 5th, 2024.
So just because he doesn't have a microphone, October 5th, 2024 is the next yard sale. And if you didn't hear that number at home, that's $61,000 in scholarships to Middleborough residents who are graduating high school. So truly, we'll talk more about that in the next meeting, but I thank you for coming by. It's always great to have community partners come and celebrate with us moments like that. So with that, I'll turn into the financial services update. I have invited today Mr. Brian Hyde and Ms. Tricia Lugo, if you guys would like to come on up to the table. This is our team from TMS Solutions. Mr. Hyde is our lead. And Ms. Lugo is in support, but truly, they are a dynamic duo. They work together. They're in our district on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. They are also extremely responsive, email, over the phone, anytime there is a need. They're already full service. What they're going to be talking with you about tonight is a quick update on where we are in the end-of-year report and then also the budget calendar that I shared with you in the flash on Friday. Mr. Hyde and I worked on that together to really give you a full picture of the budget process, what you can expect along the way, and the different avenues where our work folds into the work of the town. So with that, I will welcome Mr. Hyde and Ms. Lugo.
Thank you, Superintendent Myers. Good evening. Check one, two.
Yep.
Nice. So, good evening, Chairman Young, members of the committee, Superintendent Myers. I would just start off with all our meetings with a preamble, so to say, to remind us why we're here. The Middleborough School Business Office is committed to supporting continuous improvement, transparent communication, and fiscal responsibility, leading to students' achievement and student success. We are a unified team with the purpose of being a high-performing school district, and I hope that this meeting is one most evident across us. But we're happy to be here. My name is Brian Hyde. I live down in Nashville. I work for an organization. I'm retired, while I'll tell you a little, a little meeting creed, I guess. This is my 35th year of school committee meetings. I love them like you do. These are the brains of the operations, and it's, no, it's thankless. It really is. But someday, you look back, you look back, and say, you know, you made an impact because of every decision you make. Supporters and people that are not supporters, they love it, they would be. But I've been at school committee meetings for 35 years. I'm just out of the table, not on the side of the table. I'm a teacher, 25 years in the classroom, a high school administrator, superintendent of schools, business manager. I retired as a business manager out of the outskirts of all the schools, spent most of my career in Nashville Public Schools on Cape, where I live. Father date. My wife was over at the child over there or something, somewhere in Middleborough. We just came back from Logan Airport, two-hour drive. So I said, kind of, you guys, hang out for a few minutes. So I will be doing after our meeting if that's okay. But we work for an organization called Management Solutions. And I went about 50 districts throughout Commonwealth. I've only been there for about a year, year and a half. And since then, I've been doing work in Medford, Randolph, Watertown, Medway, Quabon, Titan, the whole of it. So we're all over the place. And most districts we go into, well, some districts that, most districts I've been to have been like this one. Pretty rock solid, good leadership, solid central office, things that are pretty much on autopilot with so much kind of leadership steer. Other districts we go into, they're a complete throwaway. I'm very, very grateful for Tricia's leadership. She is the brains of the operation, just so we all know that very clearly. She comes from the accounting side, which she'll talk about in a few minutes, and I come from the education side. But since we've been here, Superintendent Myers has been a joy to work with. She's, in my opinion, extremely knowledgeable with budget, most of them are not. We always say, you know, you screw the curriculum, you're not gonna get fired, you mess up the budget, you're on the way up the door. She was round enough members the first day, and I was very impressed with what I'm hearing about in terms of capital projects, in terms of circuit breaker, in terms of staffing, and FY25 budget process, she's already commenced. So we're in a good spot, and our job now is to finish the job, I guess. We also worked with Sean Cesliano. He's a huge driver. I mean, very, very fortunate technology director, who is that, adaptive and steel, but also he gets it. He gets education, he gets technology, he gets kids, and he gets feeling adults, which is a hot topic, right? And then, of course, you know, super fantastic business office staff. We've worked, we've only been there about two weeks, really, and, but Cheryl Bian and I are in PM, so they they know their jobs, they know them well, and I think what they, what the business office needs is just some strong leadership who's gonna make sure the admin is doing their job or the commanders are doing their work. But so far, we've been reviewing policy, we've been reading contracts. We can get past budgets, this budget, capital improvement projects, and of course, the budget. To your website, you know, get a little bit of each of you before we got here. But the building admin are in the now, right? The superintendent is in the next, and we're on that side. We're in the next. So the building administration, to date, seem to be, none of our schools are, from being in the cultural league and the Patriot League for years as a coach and advisor, Middleborough is always a cool town, great programs. And the staff who runs, really seem to be strong leaders. So I think you're in a good place. We're really doing, and I've seen, like I just said, the districts that I've been working in the past year and a half, the cushions, you guys are doing very well. So as Bill Bellcheck would say, on to Cincinnati, we're on to FY25 and the budget process. And I think after Tricia introduces herself and talks about the end of the year report, we'll jump into the FY25 budget and get you out of there. Trish?
Thank you. Hello, everybody. So I'm Patricia Lugo. I just married in July, so now I'm actually Patricia Boyer. So I recently retired myself. I've been doing this work for 30 years. And I, I love working in the accounting field, love the business office. I just was tired of doing it five days a week, 50, 60 hours a week. So I'm doing this on a part-time basis, and I've been grateful enough to be able to work with TMS, who is all over the state, and many, as Brian said, 50 districts are so over the state. So we've been here for a few weeks. This is the second district that Brian and I are working in. We've met the staff here, Carolyn and the staff, business office staff, very knowledgeable in what they're doing. When we ask questions, they get us the answers right away. Very nice folks as well. So I've been tasked, I, I've taken it upon myself to finish the end-of-year report. I don't know what your experience is with that, but the end-of-year report is a huge financial report that's due to the Department of Ed. It has to be done on an annual basis. So I'm tasked with putting that together, finishing up and wrapping it up, and sending it into Jesse's. So that's all I have for now. Nice to be here, though. Thank you.
Question for the budget side. I'd just like to say, Brian and I have reacquainted a long time ago. We're sort of a community together, it's not a date. So I appreciate Brian being here and talking to Superintendent Myers when I'm not here. I think that's great. Brian is a very knowledgeable person, and I know how people feel about him, especially down in Cape. My wife works down in Cape, so it's how it's thought of. So I think it's a good fit, so thank you both for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Any other questions or comments? Do you know about the calendar or?
Sure. But you don't have a calendar from you. Like we said earlier, transparent communication. Right? It's, it's good that this is a, this is a draft, and it's a game plan. And I think it's something that everyone in the whole community should know, where we are, what we're doing, and what we're doing. So if you need a copy, you don't have one, the superintendent does have it, you can pass it down. So basically, three columns in the middle, one for the administration of the school committee and one for the town of Middleborough. We are already down in November. If you jumped on to the tent, which is this evening, we're asking you to review the calendar. And we want your, I'm beginning to vote, which is awareness and certainly support of this calendar. To start off with, a full budget calendar, hopefully next month's meeting or this month's meeting. We'll meet with the individual principals at the end of November, because I understand the superintendent has already tasked them with creating their expense-side budget. Staffing is, each budget manager, director, or principal will provide any needed new staff that tend to be in special education, mandated. But maybe we might need a counselor or a math teacher or something, or another approach or something. But we'll give all the staff the opportunity to request new staff. In December, per town manager, I saw on their website or the calendar that they were, the town manager, town administrator, has shared with the superintendent is capital planning committee meetings. We're also going to give the staff the opportunity to provide any feedback on capital improvement projects. Superintendent Facilities Director and myself and Trish will vet them, will bring them to you. We'll ask you to support them at some point down the road. The deadline for the operating budget will be December 5th. And on December 6th, special staff meetings, which obviously drives the budget. It is most volatile aspect of your entire budget. I was working for the committee at one point in my career, and I thought this, the special education budget is the one part of the budget we can count on every year. We know exactly where we are. I'm like, one student moves in, it can be a billion dollars. Some of these, some of these, I have a daughter who's a residential student in a private school. And it's, one person who's in the district, it's, it could be $200,000, $300,000 in the world, all transportation. So look at staffing, what our needs are. We'll meet in mid-December with the special education, the services director, the technology, curriculum instruction, facilities people to get their budgets in. And by December 29th, we'll have a full look at information to the town manager. And to you, of course, you're gonna be on lockstep, the entire, we'll present updates every month to you so you know exactly where we are in the process. The superintendent will have a recommendation for you on February 1st. And then that'll be your final budget, that'll be the superintendent's budget. And she'll present that to you on February 8th. And we'll jump on to a few other items. And then March 7th, we're gonna ask you to, well, you'll be reviewing the budget along, but the public hearing that evening and the discussion of the superintendent's budget, the schedule for FY25, March 21st, we ask you to adopt that operating budget, and superintendent's budget becomes the school committee's budget. Ultimately, as you know, it's certainly any mass meetings, this is your budget. That'll happen end of March, and at that point, we'll prepare for the town meeting, which happens in April, and we'll move on to 26. So again, that's the staff, and the superintendent budget, anything we've asked for.
Yeah, I think it's pertinent for the budget subcommittee to highlight that it says January TBD, only because I wasn't gonna speak for the time, you know, for those members on that committee. I'll put in the flash this week, just looking, if you could give me some timeprints for scheduling so that I can work with the TMS team. I'll probably be looking at Tuesdays and Fridays to schedule those. And then if you could just give me feedback, sometimes people will say, I'd rather see, you know, a four-hour block and get as much done. Other people will say, I'd rather, that's a lot at once. You know what I mean? If you want to give me just whatever your preference is, I can try to work around that. We certainly have a lot to do in a short period of time, but I think those conversations are important to not rush so you can ask questions, make sure you're comfortable with what we're talking about, proposal, that sort of thing. Most of these dates are in line with what we've done in the past, with the exception that I did advance the budget calendar this year. And I did that in September, anticipating Director Higgins' departure and also in anticipation of this particular budget season. So that's the justification. I'll be using this process to say, do we like having it that early? I'm not averse to keeping it that early, but I'm using this, this year to kind of back that.
Any questions or thoughts or comments?
The only thing I should say that I would like to add.
The only thing I should say this, that I would like to add is that the last meeting, right before, if you will, the new fiscal year begins, that there really be an overview of where we're at. Because as you know, you can plan things in January. You find out somebody's moved in and you have to make adjustments. And technically speaking, the budget's supposed to be balanced July 1st. And you don't want to be out of compliance. You know, somebody might need to be moved around for certain areas if you have issues. So that's everything I would add. That makes sense. Anyone else? Hearing none. I'll open the floor. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. And we'll start with the middle video. I'll save it for now.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn to just the brief item of the school calendar. I think it's important to let our community know we're gonna be embarking on that conversation. I slated it for a discussion in December. What I'll be doing, what we're already doing, I've been working on it with Anne Gagnon and also Chairman Young, to just give a couple of options so that when I, when I come, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting or there, probably the next meeting. Yeah, I think it'll be the next meeting. Come with the options so that not only can you look at them, but then you can post those to the community so that we can solicit feedback. Things, there's a couple of notes that you should have to be aware of or should be aware of in particular for next year. We will have a voting day in September that we don't always have. And the question always becomes, do you close the district on the day of voting or do you keep it open? We can have that conversation when we get to it. I certainly have recommendations and thoughts about it that I'll, that I'll share. But that will be something to consider. And there are those things. So with that, and also when you start.
I believe the September election day is still waiting on the stage.
Right, that's part of, that's part of the issue. They haven't established it yet. To be honest with you, I don't. Usually we have the calendar wrapped up by January. I don't know if they're gonna have it done by then. Because they have, they have multiple options. To be honest with the department, it's based on the turnaround from the primary to regular election day, making sure they have enough time to set up the next ballot or anything like that. And so.
What we'll try to do is just give you an idea. You know, it's not like, there's a finite number of options that could be in September. So we'll try to break that down as much as possible. Just know that until that date is set, that'll certainly be a variable. But even if you set the calendar in December and the date is released thereafter, you can amend the calendar. So I think it's important, I think our families like to have this information in advance. I like doing it before the end of the calendar year. I think that part's important for our families. So with that, do you have any questions about that? Okay. So with that, I'll move to my last item, which is goal two of our school improvement plan process. I will start by inviting up Mrs. Lisa White, who's here to present the school improvement plan for the Mary Kate Good Elementary School. Welcome, Mrs. White.
We have to exit to your slide. Because chair is first on my slide.
That's okay, while he's doing math, why don't you?
I'm gonna stop on the.
Sure.
So thank you for this opportunity. Chairman Jones, the current members, this line. I'd like to thank our, our current members that group have the, like, writing this plan, which Susie was following my class and that they can have an example. And I would also welcome our new members, because we're starting. So this is one, it's not a need, stock and I explain. So also welcome our new members this year. Amy Simpson, Meg Larson, Eastman, Eric Jones. And this year, we added our pre-year member, which is Sergeant Valeria. So our goal one is moving to academic excellence through the implementation of universally designed instructional practices that provide rigorous and engaging learning experience for all students with multiple entry points while narrowing the mission gap. So what I did was I, you know, we were basically the school council, looking at the study and core curriculum instruction and assessment. So curriculum being sort of all staff and having high expectations and student engagement for all students. So what are we going to do to achieve that specific piece of curriculum? And what you had received from me was the whole school plan aligned to our district plan. Our district plan is very well-written, which was a great jumping off to align our school plan suit. So in the area of curriculum, we're specifically looking at areas of language comprehension, joy recognition. We're looking at our, especially if our science program could be utilized in our elementary schools. And I've claimed this, I've had the pleasure of walking through our personal technical grades many times. And I'm already seeing the food bearing from flying. Our students writing in the first grade looks great. I am so pleased with what we're already seeing with that program. I'm, when I have people better teachers who are, you know, I've been running down the hall with students who are saying, look at this. So very exciting for us. In the area of mathematics, we do have the updated divisions, which has helped the river, which is been great. And teachers are seeing some great future that as well. We have our active coaches, which I will speak of more in depth coming up. But Amy Anderson has done a great job with, working with our teachers with really upping the use of manipulatives and mathematics. Our kids are getting real good at versatile's, which are great for our kids to, to use. And we're actually gonna start using them in ELA, which is really fun for me. We're looking at vocabulary in math specifically. Our teachers are receiving award walls that are helping our students with mathematical vocabulary specifically. In all subject areas of curriculum, we're looking at writing. Writing across the board is, and our impact boards have shown writing is a issue. So we're taking it from multiple angles. First with UFLY, being, making sure that our students in grades 20 who have that phonological awareness to be able to send our words, write words, increase their writing in those younger grades. Then again, looking at it in 3, 4 and 5 of the different types of writing. You know, we have the narrative, we have, you know, the expository. But also looking at how do we respond to reading and reading text in answering those kinds of questions, very different. Looking at how do we respond to mathematical questions, very different in writing. Say, what's writing a science lab? What does that look like? So those all are really, really important for our kids to be able to be good writers in all academic areas. We also have grade trajectories and scope and sequences. Now with math, it's a little different. We have a program, so we, it kind of comes with the program. And it's our first year with the update. So we don't wanna mess with it too much. We wanna kind of let it go and see how it looks this year. And where our teachers are giving, will give us feedback. And this doesn't fit here, we need to move it, which that's what we will look at at the end of the year. With ELA, where our teachers worked over the summer to create the beginning of working with trajectories and scope and sequences for ELA as well. So what are we teaching when? It's so important to make sure that we're hitting all of the marks and all of the standards as we're moving through. We do this through professional learning and professional learning communities within our schools without teachers. Professional development is key to doing what we need to do. Mr. Thompson and I have been very creative in getting teachers freed up. We have our after-school, you know, staff meetings and PLC meetings, not enough. So we've been able to, you've heard me talk, which I will again, about our town meetings. It's, it's an hour a month that our students meet as a grade level. That gives our teachers time to work with professional development, work with our coaches, to be able to kind of embed that PD as we're, as we're moving. We've added an additional one this year that our specialist teachers are going into classrooms and working with our kids. So our teachers have that additional morning time to work as teams also with curriculum. So they're learning it and then talking about it and then implementing it. So sharing that resources, you know, bringing all the minds to the table is key. Next is instruction, collaborating with student teams and specialists to improve instructional strategies. Again, looking at those trajectories, making sure that we're aligned across not only classroom to classroom, but what does it look above and below what we're doing? Our standards are our roadmap, but we have to fill, fill that in. So that's what we're doing now. And we're working with our curriculum teams to do that. Making sure that we're giving various modes of instruction, explicit, guided whole group and small group. I, I don't have to tell you, you all know this, children learn differently. And we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our children and what works best for them. Differentiation, so even within explicit guided whole group, even within a small group, even within working with three different children, that instruction still needs to be differentiated. So making sure that, again, we're meeting to that minute level, meeting our children and being able to close the gaps for them as quickly as possible. Tier intervention, when we, we have our tier one, which is our, our regular curriculum that we're using that holds students' gap. Tier two, we're looking at, we have ST math, we have Lexio, we have even, teachers do a great job of being able to look at student work and have a, you know, if a student is struggling in a particular area, grab them in a small group. And, you know, we don't want children to go down the path of learning, you know, learning something correctly. We wanna stop it, make that mid-course correction move forward. So that's very important to have that, the tiered intervention for our students. This year, we, each year, I'll be honest, I, I, every year we look at our coaching cycles for our teachers. And every year, I'm like, let's try this, let's, we've yet to find a sweet spot of, of what's working. I think I found it. It's really, our teachers love it this year. So what we're doing this year with our coaches is we're calling focus weeks. We looked at the teacher's schedules and we found matches with grades five and two, four and one. And third grade is a standalone because I have new staff on more than new teachers. I have a teacher out on maternity leave, so there's a sub. So that's a little, that, that group of teachers just has a higher need just because I have newer staff on there. So what happens with our coaches is on a, it's a 5-2 week, the coaches embed themselves in those two grade levels. It doesn't mean they ignore everybody else, but they're really embedding. The teachers are signing up for a menu of things. Teachers are signing up for onsite visits. They're signing up for planning time with the coaches. They're signing up for model lessons. The coaches are just coming in to visit, to see what our kids are doing. I've got some great feedback from both the coaches and the teachers that they really like this model. That it gives teachers time to implement it out in coaching and then it allows for them to circle back and revisit what they've done. Right now, it's really looking good. We've added, we, this specifically special education coach has been added this year. So she's doing the exact same thing. She's following our schedule. So when our coaches are embedding, she's embedding with the special education lens, with our janitor teachers and our co-teaching models. So it's really, really looking, looking good. Assessing, through data and analysis, we're evaluating student performance and developing appropriate interventions and monitoring of academic progress. This is what we do every day. You know, we have our, we have our benchmarks, our SPAM 360 we do three times a year. We have our writing portfolios. But more off, more importantly, is what we're doing every day. Looking at our student work every single day and making those corrections, those mid-course corrections as we, as we go. Goal two, provide an equitable incentive that inspires and empowers all students to increase their academic success. How we're doing that is through multi-tiered instruction, which I mentioned. Our child study team, this has become, I must say, we have, as you, as you mentioned, the assistant principal, Josh Dyer is heading this team. And he's done a great job with getting this team together, with really identifying our students that are, need something extra. He's done a great job with identifying the students that we, tier two, tier three, with data, data reviews. It's not, you know, students are, excuse me, teachers are coming with the data to really show where the needs are for our kids. Again, professional learning is key. We need our teachers to be highly qualified. We have some amazing, amazing teachers. And not only is it that our coaches are providing this professional development, but they're also providing it to each other in, in those grade level teams. And it's really, the conversations are so rich. Again, we have attendance. Students need to be in school. And we need to make sure that we're monitoring attendance because if students are not in school, you know, they're not learning. If a day that's missed, now we have to play catch-up, you know? And kids fall behind and we don't want that. So attendance is key. And finally, this was a new goal for me to look at. You know, I, my goal three tended to lean in the past more focused on SEL specifically. And students, not only teachers, not only visitors, everyone needs to feel not only physically safe in the building, emotionally safe in the building. So when I looked at the school and I, when we talked with school, our school council, safety is so encompassing for that reason. And so to ensure a safe and secure environment for all students, staff and visitors at MPG. A safe school environment addresses the emotional and physical safety of students and staff by using a comprehensive approach that engages school staff, district staff, students, families and the community. It's all of us, we all need to keep our students safe. For instance, we have a community member that comes to our school and rings the doorbell. We are going to ask you who you are and why are you there? And, you know, for the most part, everybody's great and tells us, but people can't expect us to do that. Even professional learning, the, the district provided a safety day, which was great. And our teachers, we, great feedback on, on that to be, to provide lots of different areas of safety. We do have our common choice, character strong, we have purposeful people and social thinking still in our, our plan. Again, we have our grade level town meetings where we go over our safety there, we go over safety in the cafeteria, we go over safety in the building, we go over safety on the bus. And we don't do that once, it's ongoing throughout the school year. Our bullying prevention, grades one, two and three have already had theirs and in four and five, have them today. Mark came and did a presentation with our fourth and fifth graders today with bullying prevention. Our positive behavioral interventions and supports. I know some of your children already might have gotten positive behavior referrals. We do those daily, students nominate, teachers nominate students. We gave out, I will tell you, I am very proud to say, our fifth graders went to a field trip. All fifth graders went on a field trip to the National History Museum. I received a phone call from the National, from, from the museum about Littleboro. I'm gonna take ownership here, Mary Kate Good's fifth grade students. And how she said, I'm comfortable into this week every year to have your children in my facility because they are so well behaved. Wow, I, this is, I've been a principal for 20 years, that's never happened. That's impressive. I, those kids are amazing. So we did give out our class awards to each class who got the positive behavior for each class. So that's amazing to hear, great. Not surprised, they were amazing. Family support, we are planning, Mr. Thompson and I are in the planning phases. We have a change to our report card. So we are in our, in our learning behavior section. So we're working on, we, we wanna roll it out and parents see it and then we wanna be able to have a family night for feedback. So we're in the process of working on that and getting that together probably after the new year, once parents have a chance to see it, to see that. I think parents are gonna be very pleased to see that piece in the report card as well. I mean, excuse me, universal screen app with Panorama to help identify students that may need some SEL needs are very, very important for, for our students that may not always show that they need some extra help in that area. Emergency planning, we meet as a BERT team. The assistant principal, Josh Dyer, is the head of our BERT team. We meet every other month to discuss the safety of our school, the emergency planning of our school. I hope we never need it, but in case we do, we do have that discussion every other month. The DEI committee, we had our first meeting Monday was that first meeting. It was great. We're, we're starting the process of some conversations about what that looks like at Mary Kate Good. Our next meeting will be held in January. Safety in general, you know, making sure our doors are closed, Safety in general, you know, making sure our doors are closed, making sure our doors are locked, making sure our suits, no, don't open a door if someone knocks. Making sure our playgrounds are safe, our equipment is safe. But we're also restorative practices, you know, especially in the elementary school, you know, it's not always punitive. You know, it's always about learning, you know, none of us are perfect, we all make mistakes. But it's about how we move forward and it's about how we change our behavior. Not always, you know, detentions don't always work if they're not meaningful, if you're not having discussions, if you're not having conversations about the when, the why, the what. And more importantly, how do we change, how do we move forward? And obviously, you know, this kind of goes without saying, but also it's important about having a welcoming environment at Mary Kay Good for all families. And that's something that I, I strive for every day, that every family that enters our school feels that they belong there. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
So you mentioned differentiation, just a quick question in terms of differentiation for accelerated learners? Is that part of the process as well?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, so yes, so as a matter of fact, met with our diversity club coach, Rachel and Amy Anderson. And having that conversation of what does that look like in the classroom? So that is a conversation that we're having with, you know, we have the ITI model for tiers two and tier three. But yes, what does that look like, you know, the one plus, I guess we would call it. And that, that is absolutely something that we're looking at, how that looks in the classroom. So our teachers do do it on their own, but we want something a little bit more systematic to be able to identify students that are ready for that challenge.
I think they benefit from that same kind of small group processes.
And that's when, when we do meet in our small groups, that's when we will add more difficult and challenging work in that small group setting.
And then the other question was, I think this came up when Dr. Merkley was spoke in terms of looking at that transition for the fifth graders to middle school. And is that kind of part of your preparedness program in your overall school plan?
Yes, so Mr. Thompson and I actually, we're creating a draft, it's in draft form, we're, we're talking about it now, about what that starts to look like. And we've had some ideas with starting small and, and working towards some changes. First, we're looking at, you know, first, how are we using technology with our fifth graders and what does that look like in, in middle school and finding a balance between that? Also, looking at having mixed specials for third term, starting this coming spring. Taking, because our students travel from homerooms to specials, so they don't ever mix within the fifth grade. So that's one way to start is to, I know HEB has done it, we're going to start. And then Mr. Thompson and I had a very brief conversation about possibly doing, getting brave and doing mixed special across the complex. That could be something we're having a conversation about, looking, what could that look like in the future? We have to look at lots of things that go into that, couldn't it be done? I think it could, I'm going to try it, I think we might be brave and try that. But next, I think we're looking at that for possibly third term next year, because it is going to take a little bit of planning. But it is definitely something that we're open to having that conversation about having, having the mixed specials within the complex.
And excited to see what this group of fifth graders can do after hearing so much wonderful things about them. So express our, our accommodations to them as well, because it's wonderful to hear.
I will certainly do that.
Same, I'd like to just want.
Thank you so much. Principal Derek Thompson, sorry, that was very loud, to present the school improvement plan for the Henry B. Burghland Elementary School. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. It's nice being up close, different changes there. So presenting my school improvement plan, I would also like to start by thanking the community members from last year. Mrs. Adler, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Alice Schorn, Mrs. Cooney, Ms. Delbecky, Mrs. Latender, Mrs. Madigan. We had a great committee last year and had some really rich, deep conversations. Developing a school improvement plan, if you've never had a chance to participate, can be a little bit unruly, there's a lot of pieces to it. Trying to organize it, structure it all and all the data that we look at can be a little overwhelming at times. And this year, we had a bit of a revelation and we talked, we had a lot of conversation about data. And so we structured the plan a little bit differently this year around what are the tiers of assessment that we have and the reasons why we use certain assessments. To me, we have four levels of that, so we basically developed four plans around that. So that's kind of where we started. So it's a little bit different than the way we've done it in years past. So the first goal that we have is to ensure the growth of each individual student, right? That first layer of assessment is our screeners that we have. So we give a number of screeners and really the purpose of that is to make sure that every kid is growing, learning and on track. And then we're catching them early. Those assessments are pretty quick, they don't tell us a ton of detailed information, but those are things like early BERT, which I know you've heard here quite a bit about the star three sixty. So if we're concerned about a kid, Panorama is another way to screen it. So if we are worried about a student, we basically develop a plan. So in our building, every student who's performing below the 40th percentile, we develop a plan. We have interventionists in the building, we have professional learning communities, so the teams get together. We've been doing this for a while, but a big part of what our details are within our plan is just really fine tuning a lot of the details. There's areas where we've needed to improve on just to be more efficient. Our child study team has been great, goes really deep, but we're not super efficient. So sometimes kids will sit there, three, we'll wait like three weeks before we actually get to a student. So we've just been trying to put forms together that allow those meetings to happen a little bit quicker. Make sure people are clear on what they need to bring into those meetings, who's chairing them. Making sure we have the right people in there, that we, sometimes we'll bring a reading specialist to a meeting about a behavioral concern and they're not really even there. So a lot of structural changes around just making sure and guaranteeing that every single kid is on a path of growth. That's basically what our first goal is about. Our second goal is really curriculum level data. I'm not going to talk a lot about the curriculum initiatives that we have going on here, you've heard a little bit about it from Mrs. White, Dr. Merkley was here. Part of this is to make sure that those things are being implemented within the school. But curriculum level data is something that we've not been great at in our buildings. Curriculum, the way I think about curriculum level data is it's about a thousand. That's a lot of time. Curriculum level data is like a thousand feet above. You know, we have a curriculum, we're implementing it, we get our teachers together to take a look at common assessments that all the kids take to see whether or not the curriculum has our kids on the path to achievement that we need them to be on. It, it doesn't, so, it's not so much about is this kid struggling, that's what our screener, screeners are for. It's more about is our instruction working or not? Do we need to move fractions up earlier in the year because our kids aren't prepared? We know they're about to be tested and they're still struggling and the unit comes after them, things like that, that's a pretty basic example. But that takes a lot of work, it takes, teams have to learn how to become efficient at doing that. You know, you, you can't, sometimes a team might spend an entire hour meeting talking about two or three questions and going way too deep and they end up getting lost in the weeds a little bit. So a big part of our plan this year is getting teams to a place where they're efficient at that. But also making sure that we have those assessments across the board because we haven't had consistent curriculum level assessments in all areas. Things like common writing assessments, common math assessments. I know you've heard us talking about Edge Elastic, that's a platform we're using to administer those assessments, things like that. So that's what our second goal is about. Our third goal is something that we have done a lot. We have really done a good job over the last several years of really honing it and focusing on teacher practices, whatever, that differentiated and instruction, I know you were just talking about. So teachers have a number of assessments that they give that does give them very granular detailed information about their kids' performance. That's what like the BAS assessment is, is one of those. Tells us what level the kid is reading at, what's happening in the texts that they're reading, what behaviors and actions teachers should notice and teach for. So we pull those small groups, they're really able to differentiate their instruction and lift kids' thinking. We've actually done quite a bit of this work, I think we're pretty good at it. So a big part of our focus this year is planning learning walks for teachers. We actually are just finishing up our first round. So we're arranging coverage so all of our classroom teachers are having the opportunity to go with the coaches to observe one another. And we've developed rubrics so that we're trying to focus what they look at. Because it can, that's another thing that can be unruly if a teacher's never really had an opportunity to observe somebody before. It takes a while to get the hang of what to look for. So this first round, we're really looking at engagement and what the different levels of engagement are. You know, there's, there's compliance level engagement from kids because they're worried the teacher's going to, you know, hold them accountable. And then there's like good, authentic engagement where kids are really developing agency and owning their learning. So that's what we're focusing on is really teaching teachers how to look for that and the conversations are really rich. And so that way, when they are in PLC, they realize the strength that they have on their team. I tell our teachers all the time, the answers to most of our problems, why some are on our team. We just don't, a lot of teachers don't even know what they do well. And when you get them together and they'll talk about classroom management, I'll hear a veteran sharing with a newer teacher what they do. And I'm thinking, that's not really what you do that's most effective. You know, they don't, teachers don't always have a great sense of what it is really has an impact on kids. So we're trying to like basically help them learn from one another, which is a really powerful practice, it's been going really well. And then our last goal is our survey level data. We give surveys every year to ask families, you know, how, how are things going, what's going well? And then we develop a goal that's basically in response to the feedback that we're getting from families. And the fam, families have given us a lot of feedback that they're not always sure exactly how the kids are doing in their classes and what they could do to help. And I'm still not completely confident in knowing exactly where we fall down there. I think sometimes it's academics for some families. They don't, you know, understand the report card, I do think the report card needs some work. But one area that we've really keyed in and focused on this year is the learner behaviors. So those are the social expectations, the emotional expectations and the learner behaviors that we're trying to build in kids. I heard you ask them about fifth grade. A big part of what we need to do is we need to do a better job in, we have kids in elementary for five years. You know, those kids go into sixth grade, they need to be able to organize themselves. We've never had an organized system from grades one to five over a five year plan. How are we going to teach kids how to organize themselves? Sometimes a third grader teacher might have higher expectations that way than a fifth grader teacher has. So part of what you'll see in this new section of the report card is our unpacking of that. We've developed an entire rubric with every expectation in what exactly it looks like for a teacher in the classroom. Everything from perspective taking to organization to emotional regulation. I also think it's important because of the last couple of years, we've heard a number of people concerned and worried about SEL and what that means. So I think putting it down on paper so people can see what it is and what it isn't. It's really not anything different than we were doing 10 or 15 years ago. It's just can we be more organized and consistent? I think if we can be and we can be clear with those expectations, clear what they are with families. I think we'll increase the likelihood that we'll get our kids where we need to get them. And we have a bunch of fun things planned for that too. The fifth grade futures fair that you see referenced up there is one of the public experiences we're going to do where we are going to assess some of those skills. So we are, we have a project where all of the fifth grade students are going to be thinking about what they want to be when they grow up. They're going to research that and they're going to present that. Halfway through this project, we're going to have a job fair where we're going to bring in a ton of professions and kids are going to have the opportunity to go into that with research questions. They're going to know where they want to go, have an idea of like the questions they want to ask and find out about, you know, what is it like? Do you want to be a police officer, there's your opportunity, you can ask them, talk about what it's like, bring it back. We're going to put that presentation together and then have them actually present it and have some expectations around their ability to speak publicly, speak with confidence, which is another part of what our expectations are that we're putting in the report card. And again, just trying to show people publicly what we're trying to accomplish. Because I think mostly it's, these are the skills where school and home overlap the most. And when I unpack what parents' concerns are, it usually comes back to this, like a lack of clarity around what it is we're expecting, you know? Kids forget the instruments in fifth grade and I tell parents all the time, please don't bring them in. Like they need to learn to remember they're not going to be punished for it. Some parents do, some people don't, but we've never really publicly said, this is how we'd like to approach this. So that's where our, that's what the school is going to do, so. That's it. Question? Yeah.
Comment, I, I love that idea of, of starting to think about organization. I know a lot of times the talk about like executive functioning skills doesn't really happen until middle school, high school. And a lot of times it's such a big surprise to a parent that their kid doesn't know how to keep on top of their homework or write down their homework assignment and those things. So I think it's wonderful to, to start at great appropriate levels of, you know, adding on that kind of.
And you'll see the, the executive functioning skills, like we worked them backwards, like cognitive flexibility. It's like a really important prerequisite skill to a lot of that stuff, being open to feedback, being open to suggestions, being able to listen to, to another person's perspective. Like you, all of those things are spelled out in that report card, which all of those skills are foundational when you're talking.
I think that's super exciting. I love the idea of the teachers paying and bringing in professionals, it's super exciting to me for the kids to, to get that chance to, yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Yeah, sir, bro, thank you.
With that, we will turn to Principal Jeremy Goel, who will present the school improvement plan for our Memorial Early Childhood Center. By way of reminder, this building houses our kindergarten classrooms and our Greek aid program.
How's everybody doing tonight? Good, glad to hear it. In getting ready for this presentation, I started with our strategic, our district strategic goals and went through our, our school improvement plan goals, because those are our, we're kind of created. And so really trying to align our school improvement plan goals with the district strategic goals. So what I did was, was start with our goal number one. And the district strategic goal is personalized success for all students. And a lot of components of goals, our primary goals, ones, twos, threes, we've already fallen into this. And I just want to kind of highlight some of those things. Well, first I do want to thank our school council from last year, they worked really hard. We had some really great conversations about how to improve our school and what areas we, we should be looking at. We actually had some great conversations and ultimately decided that a lot of our goals that we were working on last year's plan would be appropriate again for this year because they were just, I think we kind of overreached a little bit. So a lot of last year's goals are similar to this year's goals, so I just want to thank them for all the work. And I'm just going to go through these and sort of highlight a couple of native bullets, see if you guys have this. But our positive behavior intervention supports, one of the things that we've done is, is we've worked as well as with HEB and MKG, we've done, we've identified a team that goes offsite a couple of times during the course of the year and then we meet every month to talk about the culture of our school. And what's really been good is, is trying to have an identified sort of shared language among, across the entire building. So when I started at Mary Kay, each classroom had its own sort of unique style. And some people, some classes were using like second step as a PBIS, some classes were using different things, responsive classroom. And so we've worked the last couple of years about trying to centralize that. One of the most important pieces of that was having that sort of shared, common language. This involves whole class rewards as well as individual rewards for students. So when we see kids doing things about, we recognize them. And one of the things that we've done with that is if I see a kid in the hallway, we haven't quite started this yet, we're still working on how it's going to work exactly. But if I see a kid doing something great in the hallway, they're walking with their hands by their sides, you know, being respectful, they pick up a piece of trash or whatever. I go over to that kid and I give him some sort of a token, a pom pom. That kid can then take that token and pom pom and put it into his class, the class jar. So he's contributing to the success of his class. And when the class fills the jar, then the entire class earns a reward. So it's pretty neat, we've been wrapping our heads around that. You've heard a little bit about learning walks from Mr. Thompson and Mrs. White. We started this process a little bit last year with it and just the idea of teachers being able to get into other teachers' classrooms, observe a lesson and then debrief with that teacher, ask them questions, the teacher can, we can ask people the feedback, the teachers are keen to visit that feedback. The way we did it last year was we had specific identified lessons that people wanted to either host and model for others or lessons that people wanted to observe, like I'm kind of struggling with my morning meeting, can I come in and see your morning meeting? And it's, it's really been effective. And in the implementation of our EFLY this year, we've done learning walks around that. And then we had a great teacher, PLC yesterday, where we debriefed what's going well, what are we struggling with, what questions do we have? Tips and tricks that I may see you do something that I ask, but I'm not going to steal it or take it into my classroom or I'm going to offer feedback. It's, it's been interesting the walks happen because some teachers are really open, so they're like, yeah, come on into my classroom because I want some feedback. So you're like, yeah, come on into my classroom because I want some feedback. Some people are like, yeah, I think I did this pretty well, so I'd like you to come into my classroom and see what I'm doing. And other people are like, I really want to just go in and see other people, other teachers teach, and then they can kind of ask, pick their brains a little bit. So that's been really good. We also, have been involved in the vision of a graduate work is we really need to think of because our kids' journeys start at Mac. And vision of graduate work has historically been high school based, like the high schools have worked on it. But it's been neat as a district having a shift in that focus because, and our teachers are so like power around it. They're like, yeah, you're right, start speaking. We're developing that foundation for our kids and our families. So that's really positive, too. The district strategic goal number two, engaging collaborative data-informed problem solving. Again, all three of our school improvement goals tie into this in some regard. Professional learning communities, looking at student work or sharing best practices. Teachers are having conversations about, you know, what would you score this at? What would you score this at? What feedback would you give this student about their work on this? Excuse me. And then our data review meetings with lead teachers and admin, we have, we give assessments, we do assessments with our students, and then we get together with these teams and we determine which kids need interventions. And to your question earlier about enrichment is, we have our interventionist, our reading specialist, also provide enrichment groups. So we have some kids that are five years old, coming into kindergarten, and they're already readers. And so we don't want to slow those kids down, we want to continue to push them and challenge them. And so we can really differentiate on both ends, the kids that are struggling with recognizing letters and songs, and then those kids that are performing higher than readers. Our goal number three, strategic goal number three, create innovative, responsive, and safe learning environments for all. Again, all three of our school improvement goals have aspects that relate to this one. Our comfort closet, so we, our kids aren't going to learn if there's not any space to learn. So if a kid comes in with dirty clothes or if they gashed, a kid had a complete blowout of one of their sneakers, and like the teacher came in and was like, you're like five pieces. And they were like, do we have any other sneakers? We went to the comfort closet, grabbed a pair of sneakers for the child, called the parent, let them know that this wouldn't happen, and then that kid's going to be coming home with a pair of sneakers. So keeping that stocked, that our kids have much more aptitude to be ready to learn. And then we're also using our, involved in our second year with Karma Choice, which is really kind of exciting. We haven't started yet, we're doing the second session, which will happen, I think, starting in February. So every one of our classrooms will have a 20-minute lesson during the course of the week. And that's for, I think, eight of us. But it's our second year with that, so that's been pretty exciting. And then our district strategic goal number four, establish meaningful family and community partnership. This one really is focused on our third goal, our school improvement goal, which is about social, emotional learning. And as Mrs. White was talking about, having welcoming, being welcoming, Mr. Thompson, to be welcoming to all families. Our pre-K teachers have been involved in community outreach and trying to identify students that would be, should be in our pre-K program. And so we've had these drop-in sessions, we did it a couple of times last year. We have our first one in December for this year. So the families can just drop in, they can do assessment with them, a screener with them, and we can determine whether or not we should take it, the next step, or offer, provide some services for that family. The family events, we're having kindergarten's great because we had so many people that want to be involved in our family events, open house conferences, fundraisers. Also, it would be really kind of post-COVID at this point. We've had more volunteers in the building. So before I came into Mac, it was like, there were volunteers all over the place at every classroom for most of the day. And then COVID did, and then we had none, and we just kind of eased back into that. So it's been really neat. And our teachers do different activities and presentations, and it's great to have families come in, family members come in and volunteer. So that's what I really agree with them. And that was it. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Chairman, I take a motion to approve the three school improvement. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. So thank you.
For this evening.
Chairman, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Sorry, a second. Discussion of the consent agenda is about a couple of fundraisers, a couple of minutes and walks, all those in favor say aye. Okay.
What time does the E T start?
5:30 P M.
5:30 P M on December 7?
It's December 7, 5:30 to 7:30 P M at the Middleboro High School cafeteria. Heat Club is the organization that sponsors this. This is a recurring event, Eat to Heat, which is why it rolls off of everybody's tab because, you know, a longstanding tradition. This community dinner has people purchasing tickets. All funds get donated to pay electric bills for families who need heat in town. Oh, yeah, please. Which will be back at the high school.
Any?
So you can eat.
And you can bill.
Eat, and then eat. Yes, exactly.
Any further discussion?
So I just know that it's a pretty good time. I've attended it a couple of times.
Hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. As I said, our next meeting is December 7. With that, chairman, I take a motion to adjourn. Sorry, a second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing that, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Everyone have a nice Thanksgiving and see you December 7.